Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our September 27th town council meeting. I want to welcome everyone that's in the council chambers tonight. It's great. I also want to welcome those of you that are participating at home. Because we are in council chambers, before we start the meeting, I just have to go through the emergency. The event of emergency. You can exit the council chambers through the main door here, with the door in the back, also a door out front here. If we hit the building, we meet across the street at the efficient building and wait for construction at that point.
Ladies and gentlemen, United States of America, to everybody on this mission, this is one nation, one empire, indivisible, every body, every soul.
Is that it? Here. Hamilton?
Here.
Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Dr. Ryan?
Here.
Mr. Aguirre?
Here.
Okay. President's executive summary. Before the meeting tonight, we begin the executive session under Rhode Island general law two dash by eight. Regarding like the bargaining or litigation or the second is pertaining like the bargaining and litigation. And also potential litigation during the executive session. And now, before we begin, I also have. For anyone who is participating at home, you are. So there's an icon to raise your hand. If someone has a question or a comment. Also, if you're calling in on a phone. Or nine will indicate that you have a question. Star six will allow you to unmute your phone. For anybody participating remotely or in council chambers tonight. You can vote to be identified by yourself, your name, address. For your purposes.
Mr. Aguirre. Everybody, like, everybody can have their own time now.
Okay. Hopefully, everybody can hear me now today, I guess.
We've got everybody.
Well, I'm usually the guilty part. I need to hear you. All right. First item, it's presentation recognition for hard veterans, appreciation proclamation. Thank you. Proclamation. Whereas America has achieved as well as similar freedom because of selfless service of our greatest veterans. Those who fought in the revolutionary war to those strongly serving in the wrong way. Great members of our country's armed forces have given up the comforts of home, company of loved ones, and for some, even their own lives. So that we could live in our land of the grass, where the investment always provided its best and brightest sons and daughters to serve our nation during times of peace. Whereas, President of the United States of America awards our medal, which was established by George Washington. Recognize. Practice service in combat. Whereas, now enforcement respects brave local citizens who served our country during wartime courage, honor, and valor in their wounded. Whereas, these residents were with our metal. Whereas, the town enforcement, other towns. Town known as Rhode Island Purple Heart Trip. Whereas, our town Purple Heart veterans, they are sent. For others, and the minus of our obligations to those strongly serving in fight is paid for freedom. And whereas, it is our duty to honor the men and women who have received this honor. Our fault to recognize, and always step gratitude before the members of our armed forces. Whereas, it is also fitting a tribute to their families who have endured sacrifices, separation, anguish, homelessness. But loved ones serve pride and honor. And now, therefore, be able to claim that town enforcement has hereby declared a part town in treat of October 3rd, 2021. Act 2021, for Purple Heart recipients. And ask the citizens to honor these veterans for outstanding service, fortunately for Rhode Island, America, and the world. Onto our sentence. Pushing to approve this. Thank you. All those in there.
Is that it? Aye. Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes five to zero. Next, we have minutes. August 10th. Motion to approve this. Thank you. All those in there.
Is that it? I don't think I was there, no.
Yes.
Hi. Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes five to zero. Next, we have tax vouchers, request approval for tax vouchers 2021. Twenty seven dash four one, 2021. Thirteen. All those in there.
Is that it? Aye. Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes five to zero. And we are now moving on to town administration.
Revenues present, town council, ladies and gentlemen. The enforcement fire department was awarded an assistance to firefighters grant from FEMA in the amount of $117,000. These grants are intended to help pay for equipment, training, and fire prevention programs. Our grant will be used to fund new radio repeaters for unmanned vehicles and 30 new 800 megahertz orbital radios. As a sign that things are, at least in some ways, starting to return normal, the National Collegiate Rugby Organization will host a tournament. Of the 20 to 40 teams at the 70 sports fields on Saturday, November 6th. And we do expect big turnout. Details will be worked through recreation director. And with respect to the American Rescue Plan. Public outreach program. As reported previously, the American Rescue Plan was signed into law last spring. Call it ARP. ARP will provide COVID relief funds to state and municipal governments, which are meant to help overcome COVID-19 pandemic. Address negative economic consequences of the pandemic and provide resources to help economic and social recovery from the pandemic. Horse with has been allocated $1.8 million in municipal funds. And a little over $3.3 million in state distributions based on our population in Newport County. For a total of a little over $5 million, so about $5.14 million. We have received $2.57 million to date. The remaining half will be received next year. These funds can be utilized to make necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband. To address negative economic impacts caused by COVID. For the provision of government services to the extent of reduction in revenue due to the pandemic. Or to respond to workers performing essential work during the COVID-19 emergency. The council has already allocated a portion of these funds for public safety and for the audiovisual upgrades scheduled for the council chamber. The envision that, starting next week and running through the end of October, we will solicit public input on how remaining funds of approximately $4.5 million should be spent. Based on the ARP goals. The survey will be posted on our town website, and the results will be briefed to the town council in November. And lastly, with respect to the proclamation you just approved. There will be a ceremony at Legion Park, which is the park break for the town hall honoring Horseman Purple Heart veterans. And that ceremony will be Friday, October 8th and 11:00 AM. Present that conclusion.
Thank you. First item, the mayor's house authority.
Is that it? Aye. Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
And Mr. Aguirre?
Aye. And next, we have the person, Parks, Parks, I'm sorry, Conservation Commission for National Health. Go through seven.
Is that it? Aye. Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes five to zero. And we also. Parks, Parks Committee. Second.
Is that it? Aye. Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes five to zero. We have appointments. First item, the park committee, who's the reappointment? Second. All of them there.
That it? Aye. Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes five to zero. Next, it's the reappointment, the mayor's house authority. Okay. Ball. Reappointment. Second. All those in there.
That it? Aye. Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes five to zero. And next, we have the treaty mission, the reappointment. Post approved and accepted. All of them there.
Is that it? Aye. Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes five to zero. And next, it's discovery board, which is represented. Post approved, straight. Second. All of them there.
Is that it? Aye. Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye. Five to zero. We have the mayor's house authority, there's one vacant.
Who put point, this Jennifer Collins, to the mayor's house authority.
All of them there.
Is that it? Aye. Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes five to zero. And next, we have the harbor commission. Vacant. Harold Nelson. Thank you. All of them there.
Is that it? Aye. Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes five to zero. And we have the, now here, and both of us. Second. All of them there.
That it? Aye. Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes five to zero. Moving on to full business, first item, the plan referendum. I can go over here.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Hopefully, most Horseman residents know by now, we have an important election coming up on November 2nd. And question one on that ballot will be asking Horseman voters to approve or reject a bond for $21.4 million. To finance a series of health and safety improvements for each of our four schools. We are looking to take advantage of a kind limited opportunity to receive 40% reimbursement of $8.6 million. Which will go directly back to the town enforcement to offset the cost. 2018 Rhode Island voters approved a $250 million statewide bond to provide these additional financial incentives for communities to prepare approved school construction projects. Since that time, many communities have taken advantage of these incentives. Some have chosen to build new schools. While we do not need a new school enforcement, we do need in every one of the proposed projects in order to improve the health and safety conditions of our schools. Rhode Island General Assembly authorized the town to request up to $65.9 million. However, a building committee made up of school department personnel, town officials, and community representatives. Designed a proposal that seeks less than one-third of that amount. This proposal was developed over the course of the last several years, and the process provided many opportunities for public input. The proposal and financing plan received unanimous approvals of both the Horseman School Committee and Town Council. The last town bond referendum to support a school department project was in 2004. The fact that the last bond referendum was 17 years ago underscores the school department's effectiveness in addressing its capital improvement needs through the regular town budget process. Bond financing only when absolutely necessary to fund critical projects. And that time is now. You will either be able to do these projects over the next few years, taking advantage of an opportunity that makes the best financial sense for the town. Or these projects will stretch out over many years and ultimately cost the taxpayers of enforcement much more than they need to. Encourage all Horseman residents, if they have not had a chance to do so, to visit our school department website at www dot HorsemanSchools.org. And click on the facilities bond link on the top right-hand corner of our webpage for more information. Thank you.
I work first well. After the one.
As of the end of July, the town is one month, my 83% of the year, the change of my 42%. If the general fund revenues are 1% of total budget revenues. Taxes are billed on a quarterly basis, therefore, we lag behind expenses until again, it's for 2021. Their own expenditures are right in target, 8% of what did it. At point 21 audit is scheduled for the first week in October, which is exciting for me, my first audit. And as the fight is. And as I do, I do ask that we back up our reports to the council by a couple of weeks, by the end of the close, the month end. Have a formal close, and then report you after that, so there's a changing of numbers as we continue to close the month. While we're still in the process of that, often times.
A motion to approve allowing the fire department to. Take their monthly reports, especially one month here, so law must be forward, get done first. Second. All of them there.
That it? Aye. Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes five to zero.
That was just for the.
A motion to receive place of file.
Is that it? Aye. Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passed five to zero. Next. A little bit, thank Forward's advisory opinion to the town council regarding the proposal. From insulated solar energy system regulation. Yeah. There's a Crosby online. And just as a refresher. Again, it was. Some question about proposed amendments to the zoning board. Heard it to the planning board for their consideration and advisory opinion. Right, made earlier this year. And planning board has come back with their advisory opinion. Their recommendation is not adopt any of the proposals. Probably.
Okay. I'm just a little bit concerned that the next step in the process is supposed to be. I'm a little concerned with having now a public meeting discussing the specifics of the planning board recommendation. But I think.
Yes, no.
Intermediate meeting, we should have discussed that.
I love it here. Yeah, thank you, Mrs. Gavin, for reeling me in. I actually wanted to just ask Mr. Crosby if I summed it up. Because I believe the next step would be not for any discussion tonight, would be for a public hearing, which is similar to what occurred. The last time we had. When the ordinance was first presented, we had a public hearing to discuss these only ones. So any amendments. Would have to be discussed during a public here. So that. That's right, that's the process. So it would be up to the council to move this to the public at future meetings. If we want to get any discussions on the proposal.
And move that we.
Second. Do you need a date, sir?
Um, as we publish. Three times. You know, so. So the soonest would be the 26th of October, if not the 9th of November.
I don't remember.
No, but eight is, oh, no, actually, sorry, yes, the eighth, and so used to be holiday being. So, yes, the eighth of November.
It's the canvassing that I asked us to move.
If it's in October, yes. November, now, because the election is this time. Okay.
I would just ask. I don't think now. We only have five members of the council right now, people will be hopefully, so I would prefer it be at least in November meetings, so we hopefully have everybody back. So by November, I think we'd be in that. Yeah, and also give the person, trying to get up to you, absolutely. Alright, so it would be November 8th. All those in there.
Is that it? Aye. Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes five to zero. Onto. Your business. Business number one. Request for a resolution to provide funding for improvements to our solar grid, but in need, of course, we need to acquire land in the United States.
Mr. James. John McCavitch, 119 Home Avenue, courts on Rhode Island, 0287. Thank you, Mr. Aguirre. Mr. Hamilton, Mr. Rayner, and myself met with Tricia Hilton last Thursday. And we viewed Teddy's Beach, and we viewed what's left of the fortunate side of the Stone Bridge. January, I'm questioning 40 years, and if you remember. We did things on that bridge 40 years ago. It's deplorable now. The beach is in tough shape. Mr. Rayner instructed me that recently, the town seemed a little left on Janet Ford, which he said. That indicated that Teddy's Beach is DOT's, because DOT is saying, no, it's not ours. I know in the back 20 years ago, BEM did maintain that beach. If we own, if there was a property owner in Jersey that had those two properties and they look, the way they look. I think the town will get in their face, like, because they're DOT. I want to thank Frank Crusaro, here video, he did this this morning to me. Thank you, Bob, for getting them up there. These are drunk videos of Teddy's Beach, that's a beautiful beach. At the end of that beach, those rocks there attract fishermen. And then fishing like leave their trash. I guess Frank climbed over to the new Stone Bridge in Tarrington with the new Renell's Beach. Total cost to the town activity was nothing. They got it all in ranch from federal government. They did raise $60,000 in fundraising. That's what their contribution was. So we took the gas station that was there too, down that bridge street. So when you take a look at that, and you take a look at what was left of the Stone Bridge. That Stone Bridge was put there because that side of the basin is very, there's a lot of damage that we've done. There's a new marine operator, Representative Ryan Carmen is here tonight. He has some frustration with the town, it was the trash that was being left by the fishermen on Teddy's Beach. I know Carly and Sean, 15 years ago, had the same problem. I've been down there a number of times, I've got pictures, that, the old old treasures, I've paid that just because I believe it. But we have to do something to this problem. And if there is funds available from the federal government and the state government, BEM. I'm volunteering to stay in over Chase. It just, it's gotta be done, we just can't let it be. I mean, look at how nice that looks, the interior. They got concrete benches on it, it's very nice. And tell you, the beach will be disabled if we don't speech. It's a long day. So I'm asking this council for a strongly worded resolution, and I will work with the town clerk, and I will work with the town solicitor. I'm making sure that it's a strongly worded resolution. And the Senator Settey will give it to representing members. They had promised me they will take it to their respective chairs, finance chairs, and possibly earmark some of this money that I've got for, of course, to build, we better do there. The town activity has been very. Terrible with their time and information. And I don't have a problem being a conduit of getting that information. They just did it. It was, you know, students, so that information is not 10 years old. Kudos to Senator Seventy, because Senator Seventy was a counselor, I think he was in March of 2018. Thought this up, saying that we shouldn't be looking at doing something that's wrong for your town's beach. And thank you to Jennifer, personally at the town hall, to help me out, expecting that, but it's all I'm thinking. Mr. Hamilton, Mr. Rayner, who they are last week, we sold, so. It's gotta be done. Let's put it together. I'm volunteering to the other committee, and I'm asking that the council, if it was a committee, I'm asking the council to let me just five or six people, so we can get it done. There's some grant writing that's gotta be done, we'll take it, we'll get big grants, some of the same grants. There's an engineering company that did the other side that I'd like to talk to you about doing our side. I would hope that we need to get a memorandum of understanding through the town enforcement to the department transportation. Indicate that we'll buy the bridge for $1 once we've secured the planning to do what we've got to do. I'm sure that, as you may know, I had that discussion, I'm sure that Mr. Alvedi will be happy to give us that, you know, what's left there. Incidentally, I was bringing a boy out, we were both hurting, at least, so. And I told them, I stepped off the rocks, and I thought I was only about two feet away, and as I stepped on both, and I stepped in a wash hole, I mean, I'm freaking out. And so when they did that, when they did that. That apartment over, we're grabbing, and they didn't pay attention to this, and it's just gotta be done. And I said to a number of the people in Island Park that are very concerned. I just said, this is a no-bran for this council, it's just a, let's start it up, let's get it going. And I think I've proven it over the years. I stick with it. You know, yeah, I think you love, so this is something that I'd like to see, let's get it done. Thank you.
You absolutely. My name's Jim Garvin. I live at 14 Sandy Point Avenue. And I've been writing town history for a long time, back to 1974. And I did an article on Stone Bridge. I'm sure you probably didn't save it because it's from 1979. But I, it's, it's been a really big thing, as far as I'm concerned, to see. But I, it's, it's been a really big thing as far as I'm concerned, to see that whole. But then, I guess we call it, disintegrate. And I think all of us who know who have tried to sail against the tide going north there, we need that button there. We need something to slow down. The tide. Because if that basin was all open, it would really be a mess. Anyway, I have a little bit of archives on the archive materials, Stone Bridge, all of this. And I won't go through it, but, but it really, there have been eight different bridges there. Back to 1795. And I think what's really important to understand is from 1795 until 1929. That was the only bridge off the island. Lots of barracks, but the only bridge until this marble bridge was built. And I have covered traffic counts. And traffic counts in, in 1910, 1915, six to eight thousand cars a day going across that bridge. And it, and more sometimes. And of course, when Island Park was thriving as an amusement center, there was even more. So that was really, a really big, big deal. I've been doing research on some of that area recently and I'm. Trying to get some stuff together for it. But I, I think that really. We deserve to. Obviously, they will covet what another town has done with what Tarrington has done to their side. I mean, that's really extraordinary. I, I contribute a little bit to their side with some of those signage, because I have a few pictures of the Stone Bridge area. And, and we could do that here, too. We could put up some, some information boards and so on of what's the history of that area. It's, it's really sad to see it disintegrate the way it has. And I think that really, we need to, and I join in John's support. Supporting John's suggestion that we do have a resolution to really initiate some kind of logic here to. See what we can do to fix it up. And Teddy's Beach as well. John and I have been discussing that and work about the origin of Teddy's Beach, and we really haven't figured it out. I don't know who Teddy was. Anyway, the way Tarrington has their beach right there, that's really, that's really deep. And ours could be really nice like that, too. With some provision and some reconstruction. So I really was taking a strong stand in favor of supporting this resolution that John was coming up. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Farman Inziteri. I live at 17 Point Road, the owner of Riverside Marina. I'm just wanting to speak a little more to this, that, that piece of land is disintegrating. And it's really sad to see it in that state. And then myself and Sean are revitalizing our pieces of land on the way that is. But I don't fix numbers and inches. And we just, we'd like to see something done with it, you know, that reflects how beautiful Portsmouth is. It might be wanted to support John. Thank you.
Okay, any questions? I guess the, the first step, I mean, obviously, support for, for a resolution is, I think, important. Do we need to establish a dialogue this, of. DFT, CFP would be. Interested in paying the property. Do, do they own the bridge and the beach?
I don't think it's the dialogue. I think if you call Peter, I'll be in the bar.
I, I, I don't know that.
I remember you know that bridge is caught on fire in Providence. See how quickly you got rid of that one.
Exactly. I'm just thinking from, just for, for the record. Because I think we would need something to establish that in order for our legislators to then be able to lobby. Funding for us. Because it's gonna be hard for them to go ask for money if we don't own it. So or have a connection to it. So I. I support the process here. I support the idea. Now I just want to make sure we, we set the dominoes up.
I was with John last week. I mean, that, obviously, the biggest difference. Between what Tarrington did and what Portsmouth intends to do or aspires to do is that Tarrington owned it. That we don't own that property, DOT does. But I suspect very strongly that DOT would not be adverse to turning that over. But I didn't want to have that dialogue with DOT and go after the commissioner.
Is, and we're sure that they, I'm sure about the bridge, but the beach is, is that?
Well, this is a, literally, he said, she said, the situation.
It, it, it really doesn't matter. It's either for apples. So if there's a memorandum of understanding or agreement, then the two properties can be turned over to the town enforcement from the state before apples. It doesn't matter whether DOT or BEM has responsibility to shake. Right now, I think, I think the easy part is getting. Bridge from DOT. I don't know. As easy, but I'm all for asking and seeing what we can do.
Doesn't feel like we want it, so.
The only other thing, you know, it's just putting my cautious head on. We have to be careful to manage expectations. We're right at the very beginning of this, that this is something that we're going to work on. One, it will take years. And two, there will be, if there is a shift in ownership of that property, there will immediately be a shift. In responsibility for that property, meaning that anything that happens there, there's liability issues, there's cleanliness issues, there's trash, there's fishermen, there's all kinds of issues associated with the property. Not the least of which people want it to look better. We don't have a plan. Right now, this is what we're discussing right now. So. I just want to tell them that for the council, this will require more resources, even though Tarrington did it all on her own. They own it now. And there is a commitment, manpower and finances to, to keep them. So we would just have to be going in eyes wide.
I'm a random of understanding if the state would, if they would make the property over to us even when we get funding to repair it.
And that's, exactly, that's what we discussed last week. That's, that's what we discussed last week, and that, I think, would be.
But we would need a motion with this resolution, but also to give you protection versus. The next steps would pay about getting. The property or at least giving us the ability to apply for grants or how our legislators.
Sure, I think that there's some motivated folks here that are. Or to start this process.
It would be useful for you to have to. Your stuff on that point, you're not, but it wasn't. But just say that as an MOU or an outline of an MOU in a resolution that we could have on any public basis and whatnot.
Sure, I, I don't see. So the MOU, I think.
No, the, the MOU would take longer, but at least the resolution is what we're asking for.
Yeah, so let's outline what the MOU is looking for. Let's commit to the resolution. That's easier. The MOU is gonna be a little.
But you know, at least.
It's actually a sign confirmation.
Well, you can keep them both there, folks.
So I really can't see.
It looks like Heidi Johnson and John Smith.
So let's start with. I'm helping Heidi Johnson.
Sure. Heidi.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, yes, Heidi Johnson. I live at 83 Point Road in Portsmouth. I just wanted to note, in addition to this bridge being important from an aesthetic point of view. That up until the, when the Sakonah River Bridge was built, I think in 1956, the original Sakonah River Bridge. Point Road was a dead end. When they put the escape bridge in that connects the Hummets and Point Road in the early 60s, the reason they did that. The state did it is because it's the, one of the only escape points for all the people during a hurricane or another flooding emergency. To get out of Island Park, out to higher ground. So I just wanted to make a note of that because not only is it important to keep that abutment safe and that for that erosion factor for that reason. If you were to lose that, you're losing the escape route for a lot of people in Island Park. So. It's not just about making it look good and making it usable. It's also about safety issues as well.
And then next, we have Sean. And Sean.
Hello, can you hear me? I'm Sean Smith. I'm the owner of 15 Point Road. I just wanted to. Show my support for this. I couldn't be there tonight. I have three children and it's my only night off. As, as I, I've owned the restaurant about a decade, a little over a decade. And. What's also alarming is the amount of trash. We clean it up daily. And it's, it's just really, really gotten out of hand. And, you know, like you guys said, it's a he, he said, she said, you know, D E M. Says that they're responsible for the boat launch or the ramp. And that it's DOT's job. DOT says they just responsible for the street. And, you know. They, and then they say call the town. Obviously, it's not a town beach. It would be nice to have someone accountable for, for the care of the, of the, of the property. And I just would like to show my support and thank you so very much. And have a wonderful night.
Hey, John, please. Any further questions?
I'm saying to you, Mr. Rayner, this is analogous to what's going on at this very, and it's hazardous to walk out on that structure. What's left of the bridge is hazardous.
Bear in mind that. The new structure may not look exactly like there. There might be a case to be made to leave the brick wrapped the way it is, because it's a better way to take where it is. Solid, right? Present that without you get a question, sir, I'm. Do you have, we forward anything else? But it certainly needs to be shored up, made safer, protected basis. So we have a motion. Did we get a second? Do we have a motion? No. The, the motion would be to bring back a resolution that the administration will write up to be voted on. At our next meeting. We don't actually have a resolution for us. I think, see, it will be the, oh, no, it's the process. Yeah.
Got a motion? A second.
Motion to bring back the resolution that I'm actually, for, for those of you that couldn't hear, I'm going. Or follow it, or follow it. All those in there, we want to listen.
Is that it? Aye. Mr. Hamilton.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Dr. Ryan.
Aye.
Mr. Rager.
Aye. Motion passes five to zero. Thank you. Okay, move on to new business number two. It's a request to have a living history event at Buck Hill 4th, 17.
Hello, my name is Seth Chiro. I'm with the Buck Hill 4th Restoration Church Committee. So October 7th, we have a plan to hold a living history event at Buck Hill 4th. To open it up to the public and to spread the word of the project and the history of Buck Hill 4th itself. From the time of the British occupation, occupation, French occupation. Does everyone have?
Yep.
Those like. So I outlined most of the topics that would be of concern. As far as safety is concerned, trying to get artillery pieces up on the hill as well. I serve with the artillery company for it. So I understand the safety of having artillery, having muskets being reenacted myself. So safety would not be a concern. As far as insurance is, we're gonna hop on the unit's insurance policies. That way the town enforcement is covered. For the event. I'm just looking for one day event. I'm hoping that there's enough time. To get this thing going. And for future events. You know, is there a possibility that I could cut through some of the red tape to host events? Because I, I have my own unit asking a lot of questions about when we're gonna do this. And I'd like to do this more often. Than maybe once or twice a year. We held a small event in June, on holiday of the early summer. It was a small turnout, but families came. And I think the more that we do that, the more traction we'll get. And, you know, the possibility of bringing the tourism as well as we move forward with restoration.
So the answer would be, yes, there is like, you've got to bring forth those dates. Yeah, so you could do this once, say, we're gonna do something on the 17th. Christmas Day, President's Day, whatever, for the, that should have once. But you can't, you can't just give you a blanket to do whatever. That was any motion to approve the October 17th, reenacted, second day. Just like, for the questions, so we have a motion.
Nice to meet you.
It's history, why not?
So, but going forward, could I just send an email? Send a phone through.
You still have an agenda item with the dates. You don't necessarily have to show up if, you know, unless the 17th was completely disastrous and all.
Okay. Thank you.
Alright, so we have a motion to the second. All those in there.
Is that it? Aye. Mr. Hamilton.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Dr. Ryan.
Aye.
Mr. Rager.
Aye. Motion passes five to zero. Next, the new business number three. It's a request to award bid for RFP. Motion to approve, second. All those in there.
Is that it? Aye. Mr. Hamilton.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Dr. Ryan.
Aye.
Mr. Rager.
Aye. Motion passes five to zero. Uh, new business number four, it's a request for the town council to reaffirm the expected return on investment in the pension.
On the council, I respectfully request free affirmation of the expected return of pension investment to the plan and value any plan after forms of 647.
Go to reaffirm, even though we've never had a firm. Second. All those in there.
Is that it? Aye. Mr. Hamilton.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Dr. Ryan.
Aye.
Mr. Rager.
Aye. Motion passes five to zero. Thank you. Next, it's the President Google for the selection of pension investment advisory firm.
Part of the council, I respectfully request approval of the selection of principal as the pension advisory firm such as. When the party was issued and 14 proposals, proposals were received due to the complexity of the proposals, a two-step process was designed to ensure the proposals were fairly evaluated. A selection team comprised of myself and two committee members toward proposals to determine the top three. The top three were then all the way back for 25-minute Zoom meetings. So the selection committee gained additional clarification under freezing. Surgery and services. She offered. The hot conditions in meetings, patient order, the selection committee voted, and the school was meeting at the space plant and has the chosen pension investment advisory firm three.
The President is here.
All right.
Here, Dr.?
Yes.
Motion to approve the hiring of festivals.
We'll go through our process.
All those in there.
Is that it? Aye. Mr. Hamilton.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Dr. Ryan.
Aye.
Mr. Rager.
Aye. Motion passes five to zero. Yeah, to correspond. Second. All those in there.
Is that it? Aye. Mr. Hamilton.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Dr. Ryan.
Aye.
Mr. Rager.
Aye. Motion passes five to zero. And on to future meetings. Our next meeting will be October 12th. That I really like it, followed by November 8. This is one more thing. I know it's, it's been in the paper. We discussed it briefly earlier. But those folks who aren't interested in becoming a town council without having to go through an election, you have until. Friday at two, noon, Friday at noon, that's how it works. So Friday at noon. Put in your application if you want to be considered for replacement of.
Put in your application if you want to be considered for placement of.
Motion to adjourn, second, all those in there.
Is that it? Aye, Mr. Hamilton.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Dr. Ryan.
Aye.
Mr. Rager.
Aye. Palace five to zero, thank you all, good night everyone.